Board members, we're going to call to order a regularly scheduled school board meeting of November 19th, 2013. Member Murneke, could you please call roll?
Member Cameron, Member Johnson, Member Casper.
Here.
Member, I'm here. Member Sligapunko, absent. Member Watson.
Here.
Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Melinda Tebow.
Here.
Student Representatives Caitlin Persch and Eric Tebow.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Member Murneke. Members of the audience and board members, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members and members of the audience. Could I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Slow move.
Made by Member Westholm and seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Board members, now let's move on to the reading and approval of board member minutes. First one is the Tuesday, October 15th board meeting. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Slow move.
Made by Member Westholm, a second. By Member Watson, any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Moving on to minutes of the special school board meeting of Wednesday, November 13th. All those in favor signify...
No, got a motion.
Or, I'm sorry, could I get a motion to accept?
Okay.
Made by Member Watson, a second.
Second.
By Member Westholm. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. All right, board members, we are moving on now to the school board, or excuse me, school and community recognition. Assistant Superintendent Crawford is going to lead us in that, I believe. Welcome, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you.
And board members will retire to the front of the area here.
Good evening, members of the board. This month, I'm pleased to present Stand Up for Kids, a volunteer group led by Chairperson Tom Albright for recognition. As you know, the Duluth Public Schools had an education levy that was scheduled to expire in 2014. The levy generated about $4.4 million in local revenue for schools. Renewing the levy in November would qualify Duluth for an additional $1.1 million in state educational funds. Through Stand Up for Kids, many people came together to share information with the public about the importance of renewing and increasing this levy. Tom Albright and members of Stand Up for Kids worked tirelessly, dedicating a tremendous amount of their time and talents to this endeavor. They did so because they cared deeply about the quality of our education, our public education system in Duluth. Passage of the education levy questions will help support the community vision and priorities identified through Think Kids and the four-year continuous improvement plan. The plan includes reducing class size, increasing student achievement, and reducing the achievement gap, and updating curriculum. Congratulations and thank you, Stand Up for Kids, and all that they accomplish for students in Duluth.
And again, thanks for all of your efforts and everything that was done throughout our community to get the word out to the important, regarding the importance of getting that levy passed. It was with your great efforts that our district is in a much better place than it was. So, thank you. All right, board members, we are now moving on to audience participation. Member Johnston, is there anybody signed up to speak to the board? No? Okay. We are now moving on to the report of these, or reading of communications and petitions, excuse me. And let me just get to that. And we do have a couple of letters that were sent to the superintendent, one from Barb Walcomb, expressing her concerns with the district not doing enough to prevent bullying. Thank you for Mrs. Walcomb, Ms. Walcomb for that letter, and then also a letter addressed to the superintendent and board members from Ann Fleishman regarding, on behalf of a neighborhood interested in learning more about assistance and eradicating bullying in our schools. Now, moving on to the report of the superintendent, welcome Superintendent Gronseth.
Thank you. Well, with Thanksgiving next week, I just wanted to start out by thanking Duluth for supporting both levels of the levy. I think that it really confirms that Duluthians care deeply about education and are really focusing on the future and our kids and our whole community's future. You know, the levy will help us to lower class sizes, to continue our work on raising student achievement, closing the achievement gap, raising graduation rates, and starting to renew some of our curriculum items that are outdated and really help us to move forward in some innovative science materials and some new ideas for Duluth, which is exactly what we need to move our whole community forward. And I just, you know, there are so many people to thank that dedicated a lot of time and a lot of effort to getting the word out about the levy, about letting people know exactly what it meant for our community. And, you know, as we just recognized Stand Up for Kids, there's also the mayor, the chamber, Students for the Future, our staff, and so many community members that really put a lot of work into passing the levies. And, you know, I don't think that any of the effort was wasted effort. It really took all of us coming together to get that message out and to really support our schools moving forward. And I look forward to continuing to work together as we make progress on our goals and our targets that were developed with the voices of the whole community through the Think Kids initiative. And we plan on continuing those discussions with another round of Think Kids this year to continue to gather the community's voice and input as we move forward. So I just, again, thank you all very much for your efforts. And tonight, we also celebrated our newly tenured teachers before the regular board meeting, and I'd like to congratulate them again and to also thank the East High School Sterling Strings who performed for us tonight. You know, there are many programs and opportunities in the next couple of months during the holiday season for people to get out and listen to the many talents of our kids in all of our schools. And people can go on our website to find a calendar of events to take in this holiday season, and I encourage everyone to do so. It's just a great way to bring a little extra joy into the season. So, happy Thanksgiving, and that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Gronseth, and so we can look forward to Think Kids too. All right, board members, we are now moving on to our standing committee reports, starting off first with our education committee report. Member Cameron.
This is the education committee report for Tuesday, November 19, 2013. Item 1A is informational. Our Key Zone Partnership update. Tracy Clennell, Executive Director of the Community Services YMCA, and Jay Rosler, Director of Community Education, reported on the Key Zone Partnership and the outcomes for the first year of the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board receive this as informational. And I regret that I was not able to attend this committee meeting because I heard there was a lot of healthy and very good conversation regarding item number two, which is Duluth Public Schools immunization and head lice procedures. Jason Crane, Assistant Director of Special Services and School Nurses, presented information on the school board, Duluth Public Schools immunization and head lice procedures, and with a number of community members present as well. It's recommended that Duluth School Board receive this as informational. Item three is a modified closed campus update. Lori Knapp and Talia Skoners, high school principals, presented information on progress being made as the district moves toward having modified closed campus beginning with the 2014-15 school year. It's recommended that the school board receive this as informational. Item four is the 2014 integration budget revision. William Hall's Office of Education Equity Coordinator shared revisions to the fiscal year 2014 Office of Education Equity Programming Budget, and this is a result of the new achievement and integration for Minnesota legislation, which passed in June 2013, changing the revenue formula for integration aid to the Duluth Public Schools beginning this fiscal year 2014. And this is to be received as informational as well. There are no grant applications. Two action items, there are none. And then there's a resolution E. 11133139, which I'll read now and move for passing this on page 42 in your package. Acceptance of grants awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota's statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best, is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. There are two grants listed for MHHSL, and Tom Pearson is the author of one, and Sean Rhodes is the author of the other. The terms are listed there for you. I move resolution E. 11133139 dated November 19, 2013.
Could I get a second? Seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Back to you, Member Cameron.
Item C is access to Internet student data. Non-district employees have requested that the following organizations be granted access to the student information system to support district functions from July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014, and that's the University of Montana, Western, and Minnesota Math Corp., the Minnesota Reading Corp. Item D is extended field trips requests. There's a number of them listed here. You can review them at your pleasure. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the above extended field trip requests. And Policy 1140 Tobacco-Free School District attached our revisions to Policy 1140 Tobacco-Free School District for the first reading. Assistant Superintendent Crawford will be available to answer any questions if you have any. It's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the first reading of Policy 1140 Tobacco-Free School District. And diplomas, there are two, Samantha Scott and Lamora, I hope I didn't mess that up, Garner. It's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve the above request diploma awards, and I move the remaining education committee report. Chair Casper.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Can I get a second? Seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? We'll go to first you, Member Johnston.
1A2.
1A2, anything else? Member Murneke.
Same.
Same? Okay. Any other board members? Member Murneke, your light is still on. We'll then go to 1A2 and start off with you, Member Johnston.
Sure, I'd like to thank the administration for working on this. We had lots of emails. I want to thank the public as well about getting that. I think that the changed procedure, I guess we'd call it, as they sent out, I think addressed a lot, most, not all, the concerns of the public, at least addressed to me. I've sent that policy around, or procedure around, to the people that responded to me, which was a lot. So I think, I want to thank you for working on that. Kind of the big thing was, is that item number four says that classroom notification letters would be sent out at the first incidence of lice in the classroom setting. So I think that was what most of the people wanted. So I want to thank you and your staff for working toward that.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Murneke.
I'd like to thank Jason Crane and the nurses. There's a lot of work at this, a lot of work at this time, and just in general. I know how much is requested of them. And they did a good job, and I think the community is happy with this and accepts it. And let's hope we can, we can work on the immunization problem in our, in our next round here.
Thank you, Member Murneke. Superintendent Gronseth. Just a second here. Don't you press it again, we're having...
Thank you. What was I going to say? Sorry. We did receive a few notes on the handouts that you have, both the procedural and the head lice information handout. Most of them have to do more with layout of the information and not the content. One note that I did receive was to include a definition of what nits are on the sheet, so we'll add that, and then do a few more formatting things. And we can send you along the final draft, just so you can see that. And I would expect that in the, in response to Member Murneke's comment about the immunization, our discussion, I think, will lead to another policy discussion so that we can formally adopt some immunization policy language.
Thank you, Superintendent. I too want to echo my support and thanks to the staff, Jason Crane, and the nurses that were here last week that talked about the issue and notification and the current procedure. And it's nice to see that we're responding to our, our students and their families' concerns regarding the existing procedure and updating a little bit and making it a little bit more informative to our public. So I too want to echo my thanks to that. Seeing no further lights, board, let's move to a vote regarding the education committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries six zero. Excuse me, on to our human resources report. Member Westholm.
Okay, for the education report, we have, as usual, oh, I'm sorry, not education, human resources committee report. Staffing report, action items, as usual, we have several of those, which I'll go over shortly. Other action items, we do have a placeholder holder that will discuss upcoming resignation and release statement for a resigned employee. And there are no further informational items, and there are no further future items. So with that, I'll move to the staffing report, action items. And if you look at your sheets, first, we have three certified, excuse me, two certified appointments. And we have a whole bunch, as usual, certified co-curricular appointments. We have 44. We have three certified leaves. We have one certified resignation. We have three certified retirements. We have six certified temporary increases. We have 11 non-certified appointments. We have three non-certified demotions. And we have four non-certified leaves. We have two non-certified permanent decreases. We have seven non-certified permanent increases. We have three non-certified promotions. We have one non-certified recall. And we have five non-certified resignations. Two non-certified retirements. Eight non-certified temporary increases. One non-certified deceased. And that's our list of human resources action items. So I move the certified action items for approval by the board.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Watson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Back to item number two. Member Westholm.
All right, and that is resignation and release document they have for an employee that has left our district. And in all the papers I have here, I do not have a copy of...
Resolution.
Yeah, the resolution.
There is no resolution.
Oh, no, okay.
Resolution.
All right.
Part of the stack.
There is no resolution. You're just hoping to approve the agreement.
Okay. So we're moving to approve that agreement. Somebody want to make that motion?
You're making the motion.
I'm making the motion, so I move...
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Cameron. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Member Westholm, if you want to move then the remainder, there really isn't anything left for the remainder, but let's move the entire...
Yep.
We did move it? Okay. All right. We are now moving on to our business committee report. Member Watson, could you please handle the business committee report? And I'm sorry for the late notice regarding that, in Member Sligapunko's absence, please.
Okay. This is a business committee report for November 19, 2013. The first part is the regular financial report. Item two would be bids, RFPs, and quotes. There are none policies and regulations. There are none. We have contracts, change order, and leases. Item A, no contracts, change orders at Congdon Park Elementary, Myers Wilkins. And then we have resolutions.
Do you want to handle those two, right?
Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, let's just take care of those.
All right. Sorry, I wasn't prepared. The first resolution is, oh, my goodness, authorized student activity bank account signer, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709 St. Louis County, that it hereby authorizes the following at East High School and Public School Stadium. There are two different people. I move B.11133142 November 19, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Back to you, Member Watson.
The second one is found on page 35, to approve the application and petition to rededicate a portion of Ensign Street from the west line of Chambersburg Avenue to the east line of Church Street to the city of Duluth. The resolution is B.6072452. I move resolution B.11133142 November 19, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion regarding that?
Resolution.
Yes.
More clarification.
The resolution number is B.11133142.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Hanson. Back to you, Member Watson. So there is a mistake in your resolution. I can only guess that that probably was the original resolution back in 2007, and it's listed there in that way. So I'm making an assumption based on that, and we'll get that cleared up. Seeing no further discussion regarding this resolution, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six zero. Back to you, Member Watson.
Found on page 36, the flexible benefit plan modifications. And, oh, boy. So the resolution number is 3143. Current, okay, whereas the Independent School District 709 currently maintains a cafeteria plan pursuant to the requirements of Section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code called the Independent School District 709 Flexible Benefit Plan, which provides for premium conversion benefits, healthcare reimbursement benefits, and dependent care benefits, and so on. I move B.1113... I move B. 11133143, November 19th, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston.
The agenda says 3144, is that?
It should be 44.
Should be 44?
3144? Okay. All right, I guess we have several different numbers. I thank you for that clarification, both Member Johnston and Clerk Tebow. It's Secretary Tebow. Any discussion regarding that resolution? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Back to you, Member Watson.
I'm finding an amendment on page 37. Is that just inclusive?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, there are no sale of properties at this time, and the last item is informational. I will move the Business Committee Report.
Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Cameron. Any discussion? Member Johnston.
1F and 4B.
1F and 4B. Anything else, Board members? All right, to you, Member Johnston.
Sure, 1F is the one on projections. Just wanted to point out that we had the bump up here this fall, as we usually do, but it's bumped down again, and just expressing my concern here that it looks like we're continuing the downward trend that typically we do, so just expressing that concern.
Thank you for that. All right, back to you, Member Johnston, with 4B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to again point out, this is the change orders. The total change orders this month was $99,000, includes the ones we have here, as well as the ones back in Section F. And as usual here, I think the change orders are being improperly administered, and I will be voting against this just because of that.
Thank you for your concern, Member Johnston, and your acknowledgement of those change orders. Seeing no further discussions, and regarding the Business Committee Report, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 5-1. Board members, we are now on to other. Let me get to my agenda here.
Do you have the number?
And I don't, there isn't another. We do not have any special resolutions before us. Opportunity for questions or others, Board members? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good evening, and happy Thanksgiving.